Call the meeting to order at 7:01 PM. Welcome to East Greenwich Central School District Board Meeting for February 10th. All members are in attendance, either virtually or in person. Myself and Frank are here in person with the admin team and support staff here, and other board members are present virtually. With that, please rise and join me with a pledge allegiance. Thanks, everybody. First order of business on the agenda is to open up a public hearing on our Smart Schools Investment Plan presentation. This is regarding our technology purchases, and I will turn it over to Mr. Simons for the public hearing portion.
Very good. The board has been supportive and really had a very positive vision for improving access to technology during the last several years. We would never have anticipated the high utilization among students and staff resulting from the current situation with the pandemic. But through the board's support and the public's support, we've been able to benefit from the state resources that are available through the Smart Schools Investment Bond to purchase technology outside the general fund budget using state monies. When Smart Schools was first approved by the state, each district received an allocation. Our district received approximately $2.3 million. This is our third plan that Mr. Goodwin, Peter Goodwin, our Director of Technology, will be presenting this evening. And I'm going to turn it over to the Director of Technology, Peter Goodwin, to do a presentation. This is a public hearing, and there will be time between now and the final adoption of the board and before the plan is submitted to the State Education Department for the public to comment on it. There is an article on our website produced by Mr. Adam, and that article provides information on how people can review and comment on the Smart Schools proposal. Mr. Goodwin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Simons, and good evening to the board. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of our preliminary Smart Schools Investment Plan, number three, but it's actually number four.
First one was zero.
Yes, it was.
You're tricking me.
I am off camera, so just trying to be socially distanced. So you can't see me. I apologize for that. Okay, so just a little background concerning the Smart Schools Bond Act. November 4, 2014, Smart Schools Bond Act was approved by the voters of the state of New York. This authorized the issuance of over $2 billion of general obligation funds to finance improved educational technology, infrastructure, and to improve learning opportunities for students throughout the state. EG CSD received 2.3 and some change under that allocation. We have completed three Smart Schools Investment Plans, known for short as ESIP. So if I say ESIP, that's what I mean. Our first one was directed at enhancing our district's Wi-Fi network. We completed that project and included a Wi-Fi access point in every instructional space. Our second plan was a number of interactive displays that we call Vusonics. We also have ones that we call Prometheans that are used in classrooms. We completed that as well. And our third plan, number two, was the kickoff for our one-to-one Chromebook, Lighthouse Chromebook program. And in that initial program, we were able to purchase sufficient Chromebooks to start the program for grades three through 12. Okay, so allowed spending under the Smart Schools Bond Act includes high-speed broadband and wireless connectivity, learning technology, interactive whiteboards, computer servers, desktops, laptops, Chromebooks, tablets, and high-tech security features. The district approved Instructional Technology Plan, which is for the years 2018 through 2021 this year. And it was approved by the state in November of 2018. Preliminary Smart Schools Investment Plan is where we are right now, is a public hearing at the Board of Ed meeting right now. We'll be asking for the board's approval, preliminary approval of the preliminary plan. And then, at that point, we will post the plan for 30 days on our website, open for public comment. And then we'll come back again on March 10th at the board meeting, and we'll ask for final approval of ESIP 03. And we will keep that Smart Schools Investment Plan posted on our website for further reference. So the district conducted a district and community need survey in June of this past year, 2020. It was about, the focus was digital equity and access. We had 2,800 and some change responses, which are per-child responses. And the results of that were studied, and the district submitted the digital equity survey to NISID on 10/24/2020. Results of the survey said that, as far as K-12 internet access, 94.8% of the students had access to the internet at a sufficient level to participate in learning activities. 4.8% had some access but insufficient to participate in learning activities. And .4 had no internet access. And this would be at their primary residence. We asked for the same questions at secondary residences, because some of our students have two places that they call home. And the same questions are 84.1% for sufficient, 8.9 for some access but insufficient to participate, and 7.1 had no internet access. So you could see that there's a difference between the primary and the secondary residence. So we had to plan, take that in under advisement, try to plan for that. We also found kindergarten and grade one access to a computer at home. About 60% at the primary residence, about 39% didn't. And at the secondary residence, 44% yes and 55% no. So we took two actions at that point. We started making available to families in the district Kajit Wi-Fi hotspots. So they could have a cellphone-based hotspot that they can use in their home to gain access. And to date, we've, we're a little bit shy of 160 of those. We also extended the Chromebook one-to-one program to include grades K through 2. So now, the program now has Chromebooks for K through 12. We had no way to know just how important those moves would be last March, but they really, they really paid off for us. And a lot of this came about because of good planning. Together with the Technology Committee and many administrators here, we were able to establish some goals in our technology plan, a few snippets from it. One of our goals was to improve the overall ease of access to the network, especially for K-2 students, increase equitable access to applications on all computer systems, establish an online site dedicated to access and delivery of professional development. We had the, we called the TEG website, that's an internal website. And also, in September of 2020, we held an asynchronous PD. And we used the Bitmoji. You might recognize my little Bitmoji picture there on the screen, a little snapshot from that. The teachers really enjoyed that. And I've noticed throughout the year that many teachers have gotten interested in using Bitmoji and making it part of their instructional process online. We also had in mind to develop a telepresence-based facility in all classrooms at each level. Although it might not be the way we would plan it out, we ended up achieving that with Chromebooks and webcams for our desktops. Okay, so one thing that we did include in the plan was the idea that sustainability of the plan for the Chromebooks requires planning. And we tried to think about, well, we have some Smart Schools money that we could use, but what do we do after that? And so we had a little schedule here, and I've snipped that out of the plan. Plan is also online on our website. If you ever want to review it, just go under Academics and then Technology, and you'll see it there. And you could see, laid out each year to replace, basically what I've done is, you know, you can make a plan, but sometimes you can meet the plan, and sometimes you can get close. So the first year, we replaced for grade six, and then the next year, too. And this, the third year of the plan, a little bit delayed because of COVID. But we are at the point where, you know, we're aware that these devices are three years old now, and it's time to replace many of those devices. So that's when we decided to do the ESIP 03. The non-public schools in our district are always considered and contacted. Our non-public schools in this district are Woodland Hills, Montessori, and Holy Spirit. We've determined that the focus of this Smart Schools Investment Plan will be Chromebooks, and Chromebooks only. So to the extent that we have additional monies that we can offer to those schools, we will do that in terms of loan Chromebooks. Our anticipated spending, if you were to approve this preliminary plan, would be for the next model up of the device that we're using now, which is the HP 11 G8 Education Edition. Had really good experience with that. We currently have several thousand of them in service. And that is a budgetary estimate for the device. The price has gone up, most likely due to supply chain issues and also the COVID pandemic. And each device also needs a management license so that the district could control the policies out to the machines and keep children safe. So the process, after the board issues this preliminary approval and we receive and process public comment, maybe change the plan a little bit, you know, that's the point of public comment, we would go for a final approval, and then we would go ahead and submit the ESIP 2 on State Ed. And then the process begins there, where they would do their initial review, ask for resubmissions. There are always little changes that they request, they're very thorough. Then, if necessary, they may deem this, we just want to purchase Chromebooks, so we don't think any of these areas would delay us for very long. But their process is area review depending upon budgetary categories. Could include the Office of Educational Design and Technology, could include the Office of Facilities Planning, could include the Office of Early Learning. So there's an expenditure review, which is a detailed review of specified budget items, the descriptions, the quantities, the prices, and other budgetary questions. Then send for review to the board staff, to SUNY, and review the relevant professional development collaborations that have gone on and teacher prep programs. And then send to the Department of Budget for complete review. And then it's approved, hopefully. And then that's a long and arduous process. One of the points that I wanted to make tonight is that Smart Schools Bond Act money never expires, okay? So there is not a set timetable to spend the money. And what we mostly need to do in making this ESIP is to have your approval to capture these funds so that we can designate them for this purpose. And then, once we gain the approval from New York State Education Department, the district can decide to purchase up to this amount of Chromebooks at the pace that's comfortable for us or that fits us. You don't have to buy them all at once. So, you know, the process includes the ability to submit updates and, you know, modifications to the plan. So it's built in there. It could transpire over a couple of years, or it could just be a couple of months. So we would have flexibility. And all the approval of this plan would do would just allow us to apply to capture that money. And at this time, that's all that I have, except to ask if you have any questions for me.
Can you bring up the?
Yep.
And stop sharing and then?
Stop sharing, yeah.
Bring up the grid, yep. Just go over. Yeah. Yep, there we go. And then, teacher, stop sharing.
So we had, I can't rate, I can't see yet, so wait till it stops sharing, and then we can go ahead. So, um, someone's trying to get into the meeting. Looks like, uh, Selina McDonald is, is?
Oh, yeah.
In the waiting room?
Admit.
No, don't keep him waiting. There we go. Okay, now I can see you very well. So any questions for Peter? I think I saw Michelle raise her hand.
So, Peter, are we looking at basically replacing these every three years?
Yeah, the, um, the projected life of a Chromebook is three to five years. Our experience has been a little different. In the first two years, we used them quite a bit. Ever since COVID started, we use them a lot. So, you know, our experience with repairing them, keeping them going, would be to say it's time for us to begin replacing them. They're a computer asset, they're a consumer electronics product. They're going to wear, just like your phone would. You know, over a couple of years, you need to re-up your phone. So, yeah.
Do you know how successful we've been with keeping them in good condition? How many have we broken, or the students have broken, or anybody else that may, you know, like, on average, what's our, our disposal a year on ones that are broken?
That's a great question. We planned in about a 10% breakage, and by my estimates, we are well below that.
Oh, great, okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? I did have, so the timeline, how long does the approval process take with the review from SED? And then what's kind of the timeline for ordering? Because I'm concerned that if we're going to do some replacements for the fall, anticipated ordering?
Yep.
Would be very, very far in advance, I'd assume.
Yeah, there are a number of variables in, in that now.
Sure, sure.
When we initial filed, initially filed our Smart Schools Investment Plan, it took, I think, almost two years to get it through. I don't think that that's going to happen now.
Yep.
The, the state is aware that there's a tremendous need now, especially with the COVID pandemic, and they've kind of stepped it up a bit. They're meeting again on the 24th of February, so I think we're going to miss that meeting. But, you know, things, things to consider are not all the Chromebooks break at once. And so we don't necessarily need to.
You're rolling.
Yep. Don't forget, we'll go have some seniors graduating.
Yep.
So we have, every year, a fresh supply of parts.
Okay.
So, and there is, I talked to a vendor just yesterday, and they're saying two months right now for their backlog. They have about a million Chromebooks of this kind with Ula Packard that are backordered. But Ula Packard is saying that they're ramping it up. They'll probably have that within two months. And then, at that point, they think things will return to normal.
Great, okay. Excellent, thanks, Peter.
Yep.
Any other questions? Did I miss anybody on the board? No? All right, with that, I will close the public hearing. And do we have to do a resolution for preliminary approval, Peter? We do, okay. So on the agenda is the resolution for preliminary approval of the plan. I'll just read that. Resolution approved preliminary Smart Schools Investment Plan 03 as presented on February 10th. Final approval of the Board of Education submission to the State Education Department will occur upon completion of the required 30-day public comment period concluding on or about March 10th. I need a motion to approve that. Kathleen, second, Mark, all those in favor? Approve. Very good, thank you. So that'll be posted for public comment. So we will close the public hearing and move to our student council representatives from Columbia, Katie and Ryan, are they here? Yep, they're there, hi, guys. You have the floor.
Hi. Last week, we met with Mr. Harkin to plan a school spirit event, and we decided on having students dress in red, pink, and other Valentine's Day accessories on Thursday and Friday. And we're excited for some school spirit in the next few days. And today, we decorated the school for Valentine's Day with about 15 students after school, which now looks very festive.
Very nice, I saw it coming, it looks great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan, thanks, good job. Katie?
Um, so as for fundraisers this month, the freshman class has decided to raise money for the American Heart Association in correspondence with Valentine's Day. So throughout the week, they've been posting informational signs throughout the building that have QR codes that you can scan for different resources. And along with that, the senior class is going to be having a flower sale on Thursday and Friday. And then, after break, we're going to start fundraising for the Make-A-Wish Foundation. And our plans right now, we're going to have either a COVID-safe hot chocolate sale or candy bar sale. So we've been meeting with Mr. Harkin about that, and we're going to finalize things following break. And that's all we have tonight.
Great, so you're going to invite Mr. Simons and I to the next meeting, right?
Yes.
Or one of the meetings going on?
I do.
Wait for the invite, all right.
That would be awesome.
Thanks, guys. All right, appreciate it, have a great night. Good to see you. You're welcome to hang around, we have a special guest here. And I want to introduce, we hold a board forum, but just to modify the agenda, Assembly McDonald has joined us. Welcome, sir, to our board meeting. You're kind of in the mix here, I'm looking at a big screen, and you're far away, so apologize if you can't see very well. Can you hear me okay? I think you're still muted, John.
So I am muted, thank you very much.
There you go.
It's good to be there. And actually, it's interesting, just for orientation perspective. Out of all the different platforms, believe it or not, the only time I ever use Google Meets is when I meet with the schools. Otherwise, we pretty much are Zoom and WebEx to death.
Right.
But I'm looking at our students who just spoke very briefly and eloquently, which is a good trait to have as you go on in life. I think I've got a few school board members on here, I think. And then we've got Jennifer, Joanne, Michelle, and John, right? And then I see, is there school board members in the, in the library where you're meeting, or no?
Yeah, myself, and then Frank, Kibo is here.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
Okay. And there's Jeff as well, okay, well, good. It's, um, if you don't mind, I just get right into it.
Sure.
I'm, I'm, we're starting that time of year again where we're visiting our school districts to kind of give you the good, bad, and the ugly of what's going on in Albany right now. And as you know, this year, the governor introduced a budget that's really the tale of two budgets. And one is one small gravel, one is one big gravel. In other words, hopefully, we'll get $6 billion, but we really need $15 billion. And from all intents and purposes, at least talking to Congressman Talker this morning, we're looking at somewhere between $12 and $13 billion coming this year from the federal government, just to the state. And then there will be also money going to local governments as well. So that's, that's good news. And my understanding that, once they get through this week's activities, the Congress seems to be tied up, and they will start to move on that. So that's a good thing as well. You know, it's always good to have some certainty when you're looking at the budget. The budget proposed, to me, is like a floor. I know, I don't think it's going to get any worse by any stretch of the imagination. I think there's room for improvement. There's a little bit of a card game going on right now, or shell game, in that the governor has proposed, you know, like, for East Greenwich, it looks like there's a little bit of an increase in aid, but it's really using federal money that was allocated prior. It's not using, in the, in the last stimulus, which was approved back in December. And really, the state has actually cut about $300 million statewide from its usual annual operating budget. So the bottom line is, we have room to do because we have a commitment to education, and we need to make sure we follow through on that commitment. We also have to do it in a responsible manner to make sure that we don't just see a one-year jump up in aid, and then next year, you see a significant drop because it's always difficult to pull it back once you've given it. On the other hand, if it's given in small measure doses, at least you can plan accordingly and have realistic expectations. We are pushing back on a couple of the other governors. So let me finish up revenue real quick, I'm sorry. We've had conference for the last seven hours we've been on Zoom, discussing what revenue enhancers we would like to consider. And we have a broad mix from throughout the state of different representatives. And there's like six different revenue enhancers. And there's a large contingent from the city that wants all six, which is an ambitious task, and that's like $50 billion, which would be great to spend with, but the question is, would we get it? And then there's other enhancers about, you know, taxing those who are extremely wealthy, those who are the multimillionaires, and, 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 you know, that's, those are reasonable things to be talking about. I don't know what we're going to settle on yet. You know, we are in the part now where we've been briefed on what the governor's proposed. We have letters going to the governor in the next, to the speaker in the next four or five days of what we'd like to see. And then, by March 1st, we will put forth, give or take, a one-house budget of what the Assembly thinks his priorities are. I would expect to see an increase in aid for education in that. And the Senate will do the same. And then we will negotiate with the governor through the month of March. And by March 31st or April 1st, April 2nd, a budget, good, bad, or ugly, will be approved. That's for sure, which is good. It gives you some surety in regards to when you have your school budget votes. Hopefully, we're not moving the school budget vote again this year. I think that we need to stick to that date. I'm having some problems with some Board of Elections. I don't want to play nice with districts that have used their machines in the past. I don't know how you, last year, you probably conducted them, Jeff, I would think, by paper ballot, correct?
Yes.
And has there been any direction? Of course, me asking you, you should be asking me this, but I'm very transparent. Has there been a direction given to the school boards yet, or school districts, on what, how to, how to proceed with ballots this year?
No. There only, there's only been communication among our associations, Niskus and NISBA, asking for our views, but there really hasn't been any clarification regarding the vote date or the whether or not it's going to be in-person voting would be permitted, or whether it would be similar to last year with the sending out of paper ballot, and everybody voted via paper ballot, so.
I would like to think just as a, well, this is my personal opinion. Only because things are moving in the right direction, vaccination has started to increase infection, increase over that, that, you know, it would be ideal to actually allow for in-person if it could be done safely, but I know that's always a delicate issue. So I know that the paper ballots is a little bit extra work. It's actually a significant expense, too, if I remember correctly, to the district. So I'm very sensitive to that, so I would prefer to see in-person. But that's a discussion we really haven't had yet because the budget's consumed everything. Getting back to the budget and the expense size, one other thing that's important, the governor proposes to consolidate all the expense-based aid. So, you know, your BOSI's aid, your pre-K aid, your UPK aid, your, your general aid, try, and, and transportation aid, and try to condense it all into one so they can just take a flat number off the bottom, which is really not good. That's been going on for the last four or five years. We fight it back each and every year. We will continue to do so. I like to think we'll prevail, but we will see. I don't make any, don't make any guarantees until after we got the answer because that's the only guarantee you can make around here. There is a lot of tinkering going on with the STAR program again. The governor wants to, for those who've owned their homes for a period of time, you have what's called a STAR credit, which is taken off your actual school tax bill. And that's the STAR program we've always known and loved. The governor has been moving towards this STAR rebate because it's really a numbers item. A rebate is actually money that they can pay out, whereas the credit is actually something that counts against his claim to fame of keeping growth below than 2%. It's really a dynamic. I personally have problems with getting rid of the old STAR program because personally, if you're trying to diffuse the concept of high property taxes, why have people pay more and hopefully wait for a rebate check, which they don't remember what the rebate check's for? That's just my philosophy. He wants to expand it to senior citizens, so that makes it even more difficult because there are many bright, smart senior citizens, but there are a lot that just are totally clueless. And so I think that's going to lead to more confusion and aggravation. And in this day and age, with all that we've gone through in the last 12 to 13 months, why would we want to step up for more confusion and aggravation? We already have significant mental health issues that are going on at all ages. You know, we worry about the children appropriately, so, but it's also happening with the adults. So I don't know why we want to put more, more, more spice into this. But be that as it may, that's our battle to fight. It's yours just to know about. So that's the numbers game. I've given you an idea of timeline. As you know, I'm a pharmacist. I really like questions and answers, to be honest with you. So I'd be more than happy to start off with the board and? to start off with the board and with Jeff, if there's any questions or comments.
Okay, I'll, I'll ask the board members who are present virtually if they have any questions for Assemblyman McDonald. Kathleen?
Uh, hi, Assemblyman McDonald. I want to say thank you for coming, number one. Um, I actually was able to participate in the virtual conference with NISBA this past week, and they were talking about the budget, and you actually represented pretty much what they said very, very well. My question would be, um, how much the assembly has discussed changes with the formula aid? Because the formula aid was put out there to kind of give us some predictability in our funding from year to year. And the governor chooses, for the most part, not to follow it. Um, and the, the formula is, it needs tweaking. There's parts of it that really don't fit now. The pilots are not a part of it. There's a lot of little things. So can you speak to what the assembly is talking about as far as the formula aid goes?
Yeah. Well, it was up to the assembly. There wouldn't be a thing called a tax cap. You know that. Um, it wouldn't, it would just wouldn't exist. Um, we tend to focus on putting money into foundation aid, foundation aid, foundation aid. We found an area with community schools, which is helping some of the very poor districts. The challenge with tweaking the formula is who does it benefit? And when you're benefiting one, you're hurting another. So it gets, gets, it gets very, very challenging on, you know, for example, what would you like me to, and I'm not being smart, I'm just asking a general question. What would you like me to change? If we had this, what would you like to change? Because there's, there's like 40 different pages to the formula, and a lot of it's focused on a variety of different things. You know, it could be anywhere from AWI, Average Wealth Index. It could be a function of, you know, is it, is it rural? Is it city? Is it suburban? It can be free and reduced lunch. Yeah, so I'm sorry. I'll give you just some examples.
There, there have been a lot of discussions statewide about this. So my question, I guess, is how much of this are you really sitting down and not asking me, Kathleen Curtin, about the formula aid? But talking to the state and bringing all of that together and coming up with something that will be actually used instead of out there every year, and then we find out that the governor in the final budget, and actually not just the governor, the state legislature in the final budget, doesn't even stick with it, and we have no predictability. Um, we've also got the problem, you brought up the 2% tax gap, which is not 2%. Could we make it 2%? Could we stop with the ridiculous formula and make it 2%?
Yeah. Let me try to answer things because I can tend to jump around because of a variety of different things. When we talk about putting more money into foundation aid, what we're trying to do is close the gap that every district has is, I'm sure you've seen the charts, and, and, you know, your associations, whether it's NISBA, whether it's the superintendents, even Nice, they're all on the same page, basically. You know, if, if, and I don't know where you are with foundation aid, but you're at 67%. Our goal is to move it up to get closer to the 100%. And now I've been here nine years, so I can remember back when you know, cap elimination adjustment was plaguing education districts. Most board members don't even know what cap elimination adjustment is these days. You do. It was painful, right? It was very painful. Um, we're not having that conversation, by the way, which is a good thing. That's a very good thing. I mean, that was millions of dollars a year to this district alone. I remember it very clearly. Um, but we're trying to move everybody towards 100% funding. But we also are trying to slow down the districts, which are usually wealthier districts, that are at 107 and 110%, because for years, particularly in Long Island, they've had that. Now, don't get me wrong, the amount of aid per pupil is higher in, in the districts that have the lower percentage, but we still want to close that gap. In regards to the tax cap, now that it's permanent, it's gonna be very difficult to repeal it and get it to where it should be, which is 2% because you're absolutely right. That was, that was the bag of goods that was sold. It was a 2% increase, and that's it. But there is a convoluted formula that, um, is problematic because, and, and actually, I just recently reintroduced legislation that's been sitting on the sidelines for four or five years. Wasn't mine originally. I was originally the majority leader of the assembly. But basically allows pilots, payments in lieu of taxes, which is usually when you send it to a school board is like the bane of your existence because school districts don't like pilots. As a former mayor, I can tell you that pilots, at least when I was mayor, were treated fairly. I, I used to actually, I required on, on the IDA board, um, because I appointed the members that the school district have representatives, so they knew what was going on. And they could have input into decision-making. But one of the things is pilots actually count against the calculation for the tax cap. And the tax cap is supposed to include what's called growth factor. In other words, if your community is growing, you should not be penalized. You should be able to increase your tax rate that little percentage more, it impacts it. Because technically, if it's growing, the municipality, the education system are being required to spend more to service that growth. Well, pilots actually work against you in this situation. So my approach has been, with the governor, is in most situations, when IDAs are contemplated, it is leading to growth. This may not, this may or may not impact you. I, I, I'm, I'm getting geographically challenged because, as you know, I only represent North Greenbush over there versus all of East Greenbush. Although some days I wish it was representing East Greenbush. But let's take SCODAC, for example. They've got the Amazon project. That was done with a pilot. That pilot actually is not contributing to the actual formula, which would allow your cap to be higher. Not yours, but SCODAC's. Regeneron, obviously, is a major investment in East Greenbush, and that is also, I believe, through a significant pilot. But you should be able to get, i- if the land was flat and there was nothing there, and it was only yielding a dollar a year, and Regeneron puts on this 800 million dollar a year and jumps up $10, you should be able to take that $9 and add that in because you're gonna have to, in one way or the other, you have the right to have that revenue to service the community. So you brought up pilot, I didn't, but I'm, I'm speaking to it. We're gonna try to slip that into the budget this year to try to get something done. That was a long answer to a very short question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other board members have questions? John, done?
Good evening, John. Thank you so much. You're, I always look forward to, uh, having your visit and these, these very candid conversations that you handle so well. I guess part of my, uh, statement and maybe into a question is the governor, he creates a lot of challenges for everybody involved in this formula, from you to us, to the local governments as well. And he's preaching fiscal accountability constantly to us with all his programs and mandates, but yet I feel like he's playing three-card Monte all the time, and it's just what you said. It, in the end, just call it what it is, and just get the money where it needs to go. And my concern for our district is the long-term equity. Like you said, you alluded to, you get these bump pays from the federal government. It's gonna stop the bleeding this month. But we're also tasked with long-term planning for this district. And with, with this not being addressed on a long-term situation puts a lot of duress on our local taxpayers. And because we're a high-functioning district, we get overlooked a lot. But the tax burden is, is equitable to everybody, especially during COVID, because income is so restricted. If we go to the community and try to squeeze more money out of them, you know, it's just not right in these times. So I guess my question to you is as, at what point does the assembly and, and the, the state representatives really, can you drive home this point and actually have a, a, a result with the governor? Because it seems to be the same conversation. And, and I've been on the board for nine years along with you, and we keep, it's a very similar conversation year to year.
If, a couple, a couple of comments then, and I can't say it specifically to East Greenbush, right? I, I have to look at it holistically throughout the district. Um, our goal is to raise the overall foundation aid and shrink the inequity. And to be honest with you, for the last six or seven years, and not last year, six or seven years prior to that, we've made progress. You know, what was a, a, a regular lament of gap elimination adjustment was, and, and lack of programming has turned around to, well, we were able to start adding these programs back and these programs back. So you know, we're making progress, but it's not at lightning speed by any stretch of the imagination. The challenge with education is we will probably never fully fund it to the level it's supposed to be because there's just never going to be enough money unless we find a way to raise another 10 to 20 billion dollars sustainably each and every year. That's just unfortunately a fact of life. I think the other disadvantage, and it's a disadvantage particularly for the capital region. You know, I use, I've said this before, you guys have heard this. In Syracuse, they follow the orange, and Buffalo, they follow the bills. And in Albany, we follow, well, we follow Sienna. I'm a Sienna fan, but we mostly follow politics. So every time the governor says something, which he's speaking to a statewide megaphone, we follow it, and you just hear some of his stuff and say, hey, this doesn't apply to me. This doesn't really help our district. Um, on the other hand, we do get some things done, but they're not sexy. They're not worthy of front page or page three in the Times Union. They're just kind of like, yeah, okay, yeah, well, that's your job. You're supposed to get it done. And that's part of the challenge with the whole process is that, you know, and I could do a, a little bit of a forensic review, and actually, my staff probably did, and I forgot to bring it tonight, of where foundation aid and where's overall aid has been in the past, you know, eight, nine years ago, where there is today. But to be honest with you, people don't really care what you did the last five, six, seven years. They want to know what you're gonna do this budget season to get it done. And our job is to drive as much aid as we can equally and equitably to every district. Um, the problem is, is that depending on the cause of the day, the governor will start focusing on that. And it just turns people off sometimes if it's not applicable to our region. Here's a good example. He talked about increasing vaccination rates in minority community in Queens. That doesn't do us any good up here in, in East Greenbush. It just doesn't. And then you, you walk away, you, you hear that in the news, you're like, God, Jesus, forget it. And that is how your image ends up being of, of the guy. Um, I don't really dislike the guy. I don't really have a love for him. He's the governor. He's elected by the people. And he's got to try to balance things out. Our job is to counterbalance as best as possible.
Well, thank you. That, that's what I wanted to hear. And I guess uh, the takeaway for this, and if you could take something from me when you have the conversations, is on the local level, yes, we want to get through this pandemic, and we will. We're, we're restoring programs, and I do agree with the client that you said, we've put things back to where at least we were operating where we were nine years ago. But now this is gonna set us back some more, and then it's gonna probably take us longer to recover. So I, I guess the, the question, or the, the statement I have to you is if you can reinforce the long-term effect of this along with the short room term, because what, what concerns me on a state level when I hear things about taxing wealth, taxing wealth is a temporary solution to a long-term problem. And the only thing that I see as an upstateer and, and, and have some business interest, you're just driving, a lot of the wealth is just gonna leave New York State with that type of revenue. It's one thing to to have to do it, but to make it a platform, a public, such a public platform, we're just driving New Yorkers out of this state at such a rate because of that perception. So again, thanks for your candid conversation. I always look forward, uh, to hearing from you.
You know, you raise, thanks, John. And you know, you raise a great point. Um, and I'm very careful about this tax the rich thing. It's true. If you're making half a billion dollars a year, you could probably pay a little bit more and do your fair share. But the sad part is, and I've noticed this with our new members in the assembly now, for those who follow me on Facebook, I just, you know, we buy, we get the opportunity to get a assembly, like, um, license plate, which is helpful when you need to get some place sometimes because they, they see your plate, they get you through. And I'm always running late, so it works out well. Anyways. And by the way, we pay $190 every two years for that plate, so it's not given to us. Just being clear about that. But my plate number is now 65. It was 149 eight years ago. It's in seniority. That means 84 members have left out of 150-member body only in eight years. So we have a lot of new members. 20% of the new members this year, out of 150, 30, 31 of them are new. Majority of them from New York City. The more, the majority of them are extremely far left. They, and I'm not docking them. They just have a very far-left ideology. They, they make Bernie Sanders look like a moderate, right? And that's fine. That's fine. That's their decision because they're elected from their people, and that's why they're elected. But they actually scream at rich people like they fear for their life. And, you know, listen, people are wealthy, that's fine. If money makes them happy, that's fine. I think wealth is measured more in your happiness in your heart than it is in what you have in your wallet. But the reality is, and I say this all the time, here's my point. 70% of our personal income tax, which is the largest part of our revenue here in the state of New York, the largest part. I'm talking about, you know, our state operating budget is about $100 billion, our state ops. Alright, and so we drive about 50 to 60 billion dollars a year from taxing 70% of the state which lives in New York City, New York City. We can't afford to drive them out. We really can't. And, you know, and, 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 you know, we can talk for hours about the impact of COVID-19 on our youth, on our education system, on mental health in general. But the other thing that's happened is that COVID-19 has truly demonstrated things that people never thought could happen. Number one, you can visit your doctor or your nurse by sitting in your bathroom through telemedicine. You can. Healthcare can be done virtually now. Don't know if it's a good idea all the time, but it can be done. But the other thing is, the office environment as we knew it is no longer necessary that way. People have learned, and, you know, we had a, we, we meet with our economic advisors at Ways and Means, which is the fiscal body of the assembly. We meet every July. We meet every December. We met in December this year virtually. And we're talking about the leading economists in the country. And one of them is Goldman Sachs. She said, by the way, just so you know, we are moving the majority of our offices to Florida. We realize that our younger folks that are coming on that are not financial advisors, but they're technology advisors, because it's all technology now. They want to live in, in Florida. They want to live in a warmer climate. So what's happening is people that we normally would be taxing, they were making 1 million, 2 million, 3 million dollars a year are moving too. And then when you scare out the rich, the real rich, we got a problem on our hands. So you gotta be, we got to be very mindful of it. I was just talking before this to my colleague in Westchester, um, in the assembly. And we were talking about our colleagues pushing this six-package bill of taxing the rich. And he said, they don't get it. There are people, and he lives in Westchester, very rich and tony. He says, I have constituents that count the days of how many days they're living in Florida versus here to make sure they have Florida residency, but they stay up here during the summer. So this is the game we're playing. And it's a, it's a very dangerous game because we need more people making a lot more money, living in the city, so we can tax them to help support our operations. People may not like to hear that, but it's the truth.
Thanks, John. Any, any, any other questions, board members? Jeff, you have anything?
Just a thank you, John.
Just a thank you, John. I wanted, and then a question, well, really just a question for maybe a future discussion. One of the things you know is that Assemblyman McDonald's been very responsive to the school districts, and we meet with John, maybe less this year because of the virtual limitations, but we meet with John regularly among the superintendents group, and he's always very responsive to our questions and our concerns. One of the things that John did for us last year, which was really appreciated, when we were inundated with executive orders and not sure how to interpret various things that were coming down on schools in the spring and into the summer, I reached out to John to ask for some questions and some clarifications, particularly remember one where we weren't sure whether we had the authority to move the GCC childcare program back into the schools, and John was able to get me an answer within a day from the governor's office. So John, I appreciated that, it helped us to respond to the issues that we were experiencing. It brought parents relief that we could bring the childcare program back into the school where it operated.
That's right.
And the other thing I'd leave you with is, we may need some help from the legislature to help respond to our parents. Our parents right now, we're operating under a hybrid, most districts in New York are operating some version of a hybrid. But with all of the national conversation about getting kids back in school, we're going to make some changes tonight to bring kids in more for in-person at some grade levels. But the Department of Health guidelines that we're operating under now don't enable our districts to have full person, five day a week in-person learning. And we're just hoping that the state, DOH, the governor's office, and the legislature will at least start beginning to have the conversation now about what September is going to look like. I know a lot of things are still uncertain, but our parents are, in some cases, at their wits end, despite the great job our teachers are doing, and we really need some information about what September might look like, so that we can, we can respond to the needs of the kids and the families.
No, and you raise a good point, Jeff, I, you know, it, it's interesting. Kudos to whatever type of programs you've had that give children the opportunity to be in school. I can tell you this candidly, because I meet with my colleagues from Binghamton and Buffalo and Rochester. There are many districts in there, and there, there are many school districts within their Assembly districts, the kids haven't been in school since March of last year. The capital region has done an extraordinary job of trying to do that. I know for those who aren't happy, that's hard to believe, but the truth is, they have done an extraordinary job. I know that in some of my readings, the CDC is going to be coming out with some enhanced guidance to shorten that distance of how much space you need between the children in the schools. There's more and more evidence coming out about the infection of transmissives, so that's important. You know, it's been clearly, clearly stated, at least in the medical journals I read, that it probably won't be till 2022 when children get vaccinated at this stage of the game. This is a disease that's really had more negative impacts on the adults. So that's where the focus is. But I agree with you. I said earlier, we had a seven-hour conference call about revenues and stuff. I had to jump off for two hours because myself and the two other members had a meeting with the governor and his staff on the nursing home issue, which you may have read about. And that was a lot of fun. But anyways, in the course of it, it got into discussions about loosening up more standards, and it seems like, and it's not political, it's just, it seems that there seems to be better cooperation going on between the CDC and the other 49, any other 50 states. So things are starting to open up a little bit more, and I think people are starting to be open to more suggestions like you're mentioning, Jeff. You know, the challenge is going to be is, we all want the kids in school, but they got to get there. And if you can't get bus drivers, you got a problem. And once again, we still have a lot of adults who are coming, I, I do COVID testing, so I test people every day, and they're positive still to this day, which amazes me. And so we got to strike that balance, but I, I agree that September, I would like to think the door is going to be wide open, I still think districts are going to probably have parents that are having some hesitancy, and they're going to have to try to keep that virtual option there. But I think, you know, the, the focus we'll be pushing on, any child who wants in classroom train, uh, education should get it.
Thank you, John, I appreciate that stance. And thank you for being here.
Yes, thank you, John, and.
My pleasure. Unless there's any other questions, I'm going to jump off to my next meeting that starts at eight.
Okay.
All right? This worked out perfect. Thank you.
Okay, take care.
Good night.
Good night. All right. A lot of good information shared, and we, I think we made our point on, on how we should proceed, and I, I thank you, Jeff, for mentioning the piece on the, um, getting kids back to school and helping our families. So that leads us right into the other parts of the board forum and the superintendent report. I'd like to do is have Jeff go through the items A, B, and C with the team, and then we can have the board open up to the board comments at that time, so.
Thank you, Mr. Bino. Good evening, everyone, again, to our board and our members of the community who are participating through the live stream. We have been monitoring the current situation regarding the COVID-19 rate of infection within our region and in our county specifically. We're very encouraged by what we are seeing in the pattern that is indicating that the number of cases within the community have gone down dramatically since January. We know at previous meetings, we had talked about the fact that we would anticipate a holiday, a post-holiday surge, the numbers were up in the mid 10%, seven-day rolling average at one point, and as of today, they're at 2.6. So we're very encouraged by what's happening, and we had indicated to our community that we were continuously evaluating what we could do with a priority for our youngest children in our elementary grades. And we have heard from a number of families over the course of the last few weeks in anticipation of the district, hoping that the district would make a change of some kind to provide more in-person learning. We are ready to do that in somewhat of a staged way. We want to focus first on kindergarten. We did a capacity analysis more than a month ago to look at whether or not we could bring all of our kindergarten children in five days a week for in-person instruction. We would still maintain the full remote option for our kindergarten families. Prior to the holidays, we were proposing a model that would require, in some instances, children to change classroom teachers and teachers to change grade levels. We have developed a different idea, which we think is better for the students, for our staff, and for our families. And that model, which I will describe, would not require any students to be reassigned to a different teacher. It would not require any teachers to be reassigned a grade level. It would require the district to allocate teaching assistance to each kindergarten grade level in each building, and we will be utilizing some of our existing teaching assistants, but we need to hire two additional teaching assistants. Those teaching assistants would be assigned to the kindergarten team, and by bringing in more students every day, the teaching assistant and the teacher would work together collaboratively to ensure that those kids are grouped in separate classroom spaces so that we are still maintaining the six-foot social distancing. So we will not have, as a result of this proposal, any more kids in any one room or any additional encroachment on the social distancing requirements and the procedures that are in place right now. The principals have worked with Mr. McQ to identify classroom spaces that are available and suitable for this model. The principals have been working diligently to inform staff that in some cases, particularly at Janay and at Belltop, but also, also other schools, that certain spaces within the building are larger and lend themselves better to the model that we are proposing. And so there will be some small numbers of shifting of rooms, but not, not an overwhelming number of rooms, there's just a few. And, but no teacher changing their assignment of kids, no teacher changing their grade level, no parent disappointed that their child in March has to move to a different teacher. It will simply be physically moving the classroom spaces, and I think a few instances to locations that have already been identified, and those moves are already being planned, and they could occur over the February break. Ms. Cannon's office has already advertised for the two additional teaching positions. Each of those two positions would be at Belltop, because that's where the need is, and there is a part-time teaching assistant currently working at Janay, who would be working as a substitute in the afternoon to support the kindergarten program. We are leaving it to the discretion of the teachers and the teaching assistants to work out the instructional groupings, the methodologies of instruction. We'll be meeting with the teachers tomorrow. The teachers do have technology in the event that they determine that they want to simultaneously teach the students that are with the TA and the students that are in the class that may be used in some cases, for example, for a large group, with a topic or activities being introduced to all of the students. But it also would enable our teaching assistants and teachers to focus on the kids in small groups to provide differentiated support based on students' needs. So we feel very good about this because it is not going to disrupt any students by reassigning them. It is not going to, in any way, press us in terms of the six-foot social distancing. We had felt that we could do it after the February break, we need to go through the hiring process of the teaching assistants, and we would like to begin this if the board supports this. Again, this is five days in-person instruction for any kindergartners currently in the hybrid or any that come back. But we think we can start this on March 1st, we're ready to go. So I'd like to take some comments and some questions about the kindergarten, then we'll talk a little bit about the first graders through the fifth graders.
Great, thank you, Jeff. Questions from board members? I see some happy faces. Okay, so no questions. I certainly support moving forward within this direction, figuring in a timetable and appreciate the work that's going into that and the ongoing work to hire, to talk to our staff, and to work with our bargaining units to make this happen. We really appreciate, and our families will appreciate it, so thank you. One thing I would like to say too, the, there may be questions that come about the process, so let, and the, the community members who are listening and those who may have questions, let's let the process work out. I think that the best communication would be through the, the principal as this evolves. If you have any follow-up questions, rather than, I know the announcement just came today, I mean, there's a public forum, you're welcome to, to comment, but if there's specific questions, let's make sure we direct them to your, your building principal, okay?
Yeah, that sounds great, thank you, Mr. Bino. One thing I wanted to do is just ask before we shift topics, Mr. McQ, if you have anything you want to add, Mr. McQ has been working with the principals more directly than myself on this, and so Jim, I don't know if you have anything you want to add.
The only thing I would add is, in some cases, because of the student enrollment for all of our students coming back in with their teacher, it was really important that we maintained that consistency. We're entering the third and final trimester of the school year on March 8th, so we didn't want to have to rebalance and reshift students. The only thing that will also be impacted, there are some instances where the special area, art or music, may need to go to the classroom rather than the students going to the traditional art room or music room. And that's a requirement for that social distancing, so that's the only additional change that's, that needs to be implemented.
Yep. And I think it's going to take some, I think the timing will work well because we're coming into the break next week, our families can prepare their kindergartners for that transition. You're going from a two-day-a-week to a five-day-a-week, coming off virtual, for those who, who choose to come in five days. And I think that part of that responsibility will be to prepare our families and, and your children to, to make that adjustment, because it's been a long time since they've been in full-time, so.
Meeting with the teachers tomorrow.
Yep.
Each of the kindergarten teachers, principals have already spoken to them on our ongoing basis. The other thing I would just mention is, because we have the GCC program on Wednesdays, and we still need that, Mr. Gregnon has a plan for kindergartners under supervision of the monitors and teaching assistants, I think in one or two cases, that our kindergartners will be delivered lunch, or will be eating lunch in the classrooms, so that the cafeteria space can still be utilized by GCC, and he's worked all of that out.
Great, great. Excellent, I want, and I want to thank our administrators for, for all the work and thought that went into this, you know, Jim and the team and Jeff, to, to make this a reality for our families.
On the topic of first graders through fifth graders, just to revisit some information that we shared in the past, we have to be mindful of the New York State Department of Health guidelines. And as schools are across the country talking about opening up, elected officials are talking about opening up, we heard tonight from Assemblyman McDonald that the CDC is considering different information. It's really important for our families to understand, A, we really want the kids back full-time, but we are not permitted by the social distancing guidelines to bring them all in, in every grade level because of the limitations of the rules and also our classroom space. We could do it in kindergarten, but we can't yet do it in first grade through fifth grade. However, we have talked about eliminating virtual Wednesdays, and we need a little bit more time to talk with our teachers, our teachers' union about how that will occur. But it is our intent to do what we can to have our first graders and our fifth graders coming in for a third day of in-person instruction on Wednesday every other week. One of the things we want our parents to be aware of is, when we make that shift, it's three days of in-person instruction, week one, for example, to be followed by week two, in which the other group is coming in on that Wednesday. So it does result in an additional remote asynchronous day for their children every other week. So you pick up an additional in-person day, but you also have an additional asynchronous day the following week. So we have a survey ready to go on this issue of eliminating virtual Wednesdays and how it might impact our families. We're going to send that out tomorrow, along with a kindergarten notification. Once we get that survey back, we'll be talking with our teachers' union next week. Our teachers' union has agreed to come in over the break and talk with us about virtual Wednesdays and other matters. That will happen early in the week, next week. We are, we are aiming to try to do this on a timeline that meets everyone's considerations, but we are working on that, and we hope to be able to accomplish that sometime soon after we bring the kindergartners in, but it won't be the same week because there's more logistics involved.
Yep. Any questions for Jeff on the, on that idea and path, board members? Good. I think it's a right path forward again, and I appreciate the work that's going into that as we try to provide more in-person instruction. If, is there any of the elementary principals who would like to comment on this? I see a few of you are on there. They're speechless. Okay, I mean, you're welcome to.
We did meet with the administrators this morning, just touched base. Any principal is free to speak up, so we did have a really good conversation this morning about this. So if anybody has anything they want to add, feel free to do so.
Hi, Jeff, this is Wayne Gregnon. Just wanted to say that, you know, from our conversations with our teams, I know that the, that the Janay kindergarten team is excited about the opportunity of having their kids back five days a week. There will be, you know, the growing pains of making sure that we have everything ready to go, but we've got the time. of making sure that we have everything ready to go. But we've got the time, if the board supports it, to get everything in place, so that way we can make sure that it's a seamless transition for our teams, and more importantly, for the kids as well.
Thanks, Wayne. All right. If there's no other comments from the elementary principals, board members, we're supportive of that. Questions? 100%?
Yeah. No, we're, I think we're all very supportive of that. We appreciate all the hard work that the team has put in and the dedications with the faculty and the staff in the schools. And I'm not putting the cart before the horse, but I'd like to see if we can eventually do it with the middle schools and the high school, too. Got to keep them all equal there. So, but thank you.
We had a conversation about the middle school today, but it was only a small conversation, and we still have to have further discussions of it.
We still have to have little steps before we start running. But I really am excited. So thank you. It's a big step.
Yep. And we know that, as Jeff mentioned earlier, that there is always more guidance coming at the federal level from the CDC about schools reopening. And maybe we can see some, you know, some light at the end of the tunnel when we see that those documents come out, and hopefully our state follows suit. Any other questions regarding those two topics? Comments? All right. So path forward has been set, so.
Appreciate the board's support. Thank you.
All right. The next topic is regarding the instructional extracurricular offerings. I think one of the things we just wanted to highlight is the fact that throughout the school year, we have tried to provide our students, whether it's virtually or somewhat in-person, opportunities to do other things outside of the school day that they can do. So we have a presentation, Jeff, and a slide?
Just brief, Mr. McHugh put together some information just to highlight what we're offering currently, even though we're operating in a hybrid. And so, Mr. McHugh, do you want to just do a brief overview of this?
Sure. Recently, everyone is aware that winter sports, the higher-risk sports, were approved to begin February 3rd, 2021 through March 13th. But in addition to the winter sports, we successfully ran a fall sports season, cross-country, field hockey, golf, boys soccer, girls soccer, girls tennis. Bowling began December 14th. In addition to those opportunities in athletics, in the area of the arts.
Mr. McHugh, let me just interrupt you for just a minute. I'm sorry. Peter, we're on 5B. We're not on the wrestling slide yet. We're on 5B. Okay. Just want everybody to be able to follow along who's watching the meeting. Thank you. Sorry, Jim.
That's okay. Slide 2. In addition to athletics in the area of arts, I think it's important to recognize that even during this challenging year, we have run studio art, advanced art, computer graphics, drawing, painting, ceramics and sculpture, cartooning. And we ran a new course that we worked on over two years for Introduction to Video Game Development. We are still running our course, instrumental music, jazz band, wind ensemble, orchestra, chamber singers, guitar, music theory, and our spring concerts are being planned. And our Columbia players are also planning for their spring performance. In the area of clubs, there's numerous clubs, but we have run all the clubs that we would run in a non-COVID year, for the most part. Amnesty International Art Club, computer clubs, our yearbook, driver's education is occurring, ethnic coalition, FBLA, Gay-Straight Alliance, German Club, National Honor Society, Interact Key Club, Masterminds, Science Olympia, Garden Club, PE and Recreation, our student newspapers, SAD, Students for Environmental Action, Defenders of Mother Earth, Enrichment Club, Guitar Club, Mock Trial Team, Model Congress, Peer Leadership, Student Council, our Labyrinth Editorial and Financial, Leaders of Today Leading Tomorrow, our TV multimedia club has been running, coding clubs in our building, drama clubs, and Morning Scholar Club. In addition to that, in the area of academic support, I think it is very important to note that we have run our Academic Intervention Services, K through 12. We have done tremendous planning, even thinking about when we return to a normal school year, what we may be looking at in regards to trying to best support students that may have some academic loss. But our Learning Resource Center at Columbia High School is still running. Our teachers are running office hours. We have initiated Operation Launchpad at Columbia High School, where our students are coming in on a live virtual Wednesday. They're coming in and working on almost an individual basis with teaching assistants to get caught up on work. We're offering all of our counseling services and social work services. Operation Graduation is running, Jump Start, our Columbia Alternate Program, CTAP, our Middle School Alternate Program. We have a Rensselaer County Health Mental Health Counselor. Our Special Education students, full-day special classes, integrated co-teaching, are coming to school for in-person instruction four days per week. We have tutoring services, K through 12, that we have implemented to best support students that are struggling in this current hybrid model. And our English language learners were offered four days of in-person learning per week. And we have active child study team meetings in all seven of our schools, where we are looking at students on an individual basis and using every possible resource we have to try and support those students during this time. So I think it's important to note that even within a challenging year, that all of these things are up and running, and they're here for our students.
Yep. I remember, I saw the recent story about some of our students who graduate early. It was great to see, too. So, thank you, Jim. Any questions or comments on the program offerings?
I have a comment, Mike.
Go ahead, John.
Again, Jim and Jeff and your team, thank you for bringing that to the public eye. One of the things that's captivating a lot of the news is the reinstatement of the sports programs. And it's good to hear that we're continuing our commitment of equity for all students, that we're offering so much more in these very difficult times. I look at what we're doing in a training model would be crawl, walk, and run. And we've crawled for quite a while, and we've accomplished a lot, and we're getting ready to walk. So let's keep the focus on where it is, and we'll move forward at a nice pace with the goal of being able to hit the ground running in the fall. So thank you for your team's commitment to continuing the vital programs for all students.
Thank you, John. Anyone else? Nope. Okay. Moving to our item C, updates on the state aid payments and the budget development process. Is that Jeff, Linda?
Thank you. I just wanted to give the board a quick update. In addition to Assemblyman McDonald's information tonight, on February 4th, I attended a business officials meeting through Questar, and the Executive Director of the New York State Association of School Business Officials joined us, Brian Checknicki. And he did indicate to us that the 20% withholding that has occurred will be restored to us prior to March 31st. We don't have an exact date yet, but we will be receiving that. For this district, that amounts to $316,469. That was an excess cost aid receivable and a Bozey's aid receivable that we had on June 30th. We did recently receive a small amount from New York State reimbursement for our lunch fund for the May 20th meals of $84, but every dollar counts. And we currently have outstanding grant balances that we are waiting on. These are for grants that ended August 31st of 2020, and that account, that amounts to $91,315. So money is, will be starting to trickle in. We did receive an update on our TRS rate for the 21-22 school year. We previously received a projection of 9.3%, and that has been increased to 9.8%. I wanted to make the board aware again that Phase 1 of our capital project is complete, and we have not been able to file all of the final cost reports yet due to a dispute with one of the contractors. So I approved, I applied for early aid, and that was approved. And so that will start the aid flowing this year. And then finally, the Asset Financial Transparency Report was filed in December. That is taking our actual expenses from 1920 and allocating them by building to a per-student allocation. So that has been filed. We have since received some questions on that and provided answers. So that's in the works as well. That's all I had for tonight.
Thank you, Linda. Any questions for Linda on the financial update? Nope. Okay. We will now move to the board forum for any general comments. I'll just kind of go on the screen in front of me, starting on my, where do I see you? Michelle, anything? Good. John? Done? Kathleen?
As I mentioned with Senator or Assemblyman McDonald, I did do the NISBA conference the other day. And whereas at the state level, it honestly sounded like the Assembly and the Senate were very much in line with the concerns that we have. The fact that a lot of the aid coming in is federal aid, and they kind of see a cliff happening after this year, because the money that we're using won't be there the following year. So that is definitely a big concern. The other thing that they, when a representative from the governor's office spoke, he just kept saying, "Any advocacy efforts should all be focused at the federal level." So they were really pushing it, "Don't ask us, ask the other guys." So they are, you know, as far as money goes, that's really where they are trying to push all of us to start asking for money from the federals. They had a couple other concerns that I will bring to the advocacy committee, and I will actually speak with Jeff so that we can, because I know we had some talk about possibly organizing some advocacy efforts, and we've had some parents so far who have indicated some interest. So I will be speaking with Jeff and, you know, helping kind of organize that a little bit with the little bit of information that I got. But I would encourage other board members to go to the NISBA website. The presentation they did on the governor's budget is excellent. It's very well put together and very easy to understand. And it shows exactly where there's some areas of concern. And like I said, the Assembly and the Senate seem to be pretty good with all that, though.
Right, right. Thank you for the work in participating and giving us the update, Kathleen. Appreciate it. Mark? Good. Joanne Taylor? Good. And Jennifer?
Thanks, Kathleen. And I was able to join a portion of it the other day. And I just want to say I can also send the link to some of the materials as well, and some of the recording, recorded information, if anyone on the board is interested in that as well. Again, it's some great information, and I would agree with Kathleen's assessment, and definitely being pushed in the direction of federal advocacy versus state advocacy. So I think this year is going to be a tough one. But I do encourage our community very much to get out and still continue to advocate at the state level. And I'm excited to see what comes out of the advocacy committee and what Kathleen brings forward there. So and whatever I can do, obviously, I'm behind that 150% to see if we can get much-needed funding. So, that's it.
Great. Thank you, Jennifer. Deanna? You're good? Okay. Yeah, I'm good. Frank? Anything? You're good. All right. Okay, that concludes the board forum and superintendent report. We'll now move to our public forum. Residents, students, employees, and business representatives of the East Green Bush Central School District may address the board on matters concerning programs and/or operations of the district, other than matters involving personnel. Members of the board do not directly respond to citizen concerns during the public forum. If a response is appropriate, either the president or superintendent will contact the individual in the near future. Those persons wishing to address the board will be recognized by the chair of the meeting and should be stated for the record their name and address or affiliation with the district or business. While the board does not wish to infringe upon free speech protections, it must be stressed that the visitors' forum does not deem to be an open forum, and the board president will conduct the forum for the orderly and efficient operation of board business. In addition, any remarks which may be considered defamatory or stigmatizing are prohibited, be declared out of order. As we have been doing through our virtual meeting process, we do have a link to an email that's on the website, publiccomment@egcst.
I think it's changed.
It's changed? Okay. Well, it's on the website as a public link, okay? And it is working. And I apologize if there was some, was not available last meeting. And if you do send an email to the board, please state your name, your connection to the district, where you reside, and the concern. I think, do we have any emails to read?
We do.
We do? How many do we have?
Just two.
We have two. Okay. So Linda will read those.
Okay. And I just wanted to clarify, the link is boe commenting@egcst.org.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. The first is a letter that we received that I was asked to read during public forum. It is from Susan Alvine, who is an East Green Bush resident and a consultant on social emotional learning and trauma-informed teaching practices. Now more than ever, we need to consider the social and emotional needs of all stakeholders invested in educating our students during this worldwide pandemic. In an opinion piece by Ed Serge entitled, "Schools Will Never Return to Business as Usual, Here's How They Can Make the Most of Our Reality," futurist Andrea Severi states that uncertain conditions demand creativity and innovation and emotional intelligence should be considered a necessary skill to manage the overwhelming feelings of grief, despair, and anxiety this pandemic has triggered. In response to how COVID altered the way we now instruct our students, teachers, and schools have built new capacities for reaching students, our teachers have done an incredible job, and their emotional needs must not be overlooked as we ask them to manage this new plan and what that will require of them. Specifically, as the East Green Bush School Board considers its modifications to school reopening plans at the K-5 level, I encourage you to carefully consider the impact this change will have on all staff in the district prior to coming to any decisions. The school board, district administrators, principals, and teaching staff have faced great challenges in meeting the educational needs of our district's students, and these challenges still exist. Considerations for the reconfiguration of space for distancing in classrooms, cafeterias, playgrounds, and gyms should be determined prior to bringing all students fully back at any grade level, because space issues are a real concern. The psychological needs of staff, as they continue to work diligently to maintain safety while also addressing the needs of students, can be overwhelming, can be an overwhelming burden at times, not to mention the in-house healthcare requirements for adequate nursing staff to respond to the increased demands on our school healthcare personnel as well. The Collaborative for Academic Social and Emotional Learning, known as KCEL, is a national leader in social emotional learning, SEL initiatives. Among its many resources, I asked the school board to review the document, Reunite, Renew, and Thrive: SEL Roadmap for Returning to School. This KCEL document has developed a matrix for ranking priorities and critical action steps when planning toward returning to school using data and SEL considerations at the forefront of the decision-making process. KCEL's SEL trends also have shared lessons from the field that includes how many districts have stated that they mistakenly focused entirely on building the social and emotional competences of students without also considering the SEL needs of adults who are engaging with students every day. We all want to go back to normal, but as we consider what the new normal will be, please don't take your eyes off our critical first line of educators who have held up courageously. They need to, they need your support to continue to work tirelessly for our district. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. I know that was a long one, so I appreciate the comment. And as always, we do, as a district, care and... And as always, we do, as a district care and want to make sure that those needs are met for our staff and we, and we think about that every day as well as our families. So we appreciate the feedback. You have someone else?
And then I have one other email from Rawan Ali. And this is to the board members and she would like to know, why did you decide to be on this organization's board?
Okay, so that's not really something I think we have time to answer. It sounds like one of the questions we get from our participation government students. But if you want to send that to me, you know, I'd be glad to respond in writing to the, to the question. How's that? Good? All right. All right, no more comments? All right, well, that concludes our public forum. We now go to our discussion item 7A, which has to do some updates on our winter athletics and then scheduling of COVID testing plan. And Mr. Simons, or?
Yes, the board was supportive at the special meeting last week of approving our winter sports categorized as higher-risk sports. We did say at the time, we would like to have further discussion of ways that we could perhaps engage our students who are participating in wrestling, but we have not yet approved wrestling as a winter offering. We asked the coach, Mr. Servadone, to submit some ideas regarding how a wrestling program of some sort could operate within our school. He did that. And Mr. McHugh and Mr. Leonard reviewed that and have some information that they will share with the board tonight. We do have a number of schools in the suburban council that are moving forward with wrestling. We can talk about that after Mr. McHugh and Mr. Leonard present their information. But we've got about 50 kids who historically wrestle and we're looking to see whether or not everyone's comfort level is such that we could at least begin some no-contact drills of some sort. And Mr. McHugh and Mr. Leonard understand the sport much better than me, so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. McHugh.
Wrestling's been approved by Section 2, the New York State Public High School Athletic Association, Rensselaer County. It's been approved as a winter high-risk sport that was allowed to begin February 3rd. It's a very short season. It ends March 13th. School districts throughout New York State, Section 2, and within our suburban council have responded to that allowance a little differently. What has happened recently, the Section 2 Executive Committee was discussing whether or not to allow wrestling to occur during this winter season or to push it into the spring. So a few of the, the school districts in the suburban council were waiting to see what the result of that decision was. Executive Council, Section 2 Executive Council, determined that it was not going to be moved to the spring, that it was going to occur during the winter. As a result of that, the following suburban council schools are wrestling this winter. April Park, Burn Hills, Gilderlin, Niskuna, Saratoga, Shaker, and Shenandoah. My recommendation at this point, especially in light that it is a shortened season, is to approve the wrestling program to begin non-contact conditioning drills at this time. You know, we have about 40 to 50 student athletes participate in wrestling every year. We have seven seniors currently that have invested at least six to seven years in the sport of wrestling, you know, and this is their senior year, something that they look forward to. In addition to that, the mentorship that our coaches provide to our student athletes is definitely a perk. I know Coach Servadone requires his athletes to produce a weekly academic report and he monitors their attendance. So, you know, that ability to connect with the student athletes this year is going to produce some dividends. I am a little fearful that without that contact this year, some of those athletes that miss a full year of the sport may not return to that sport. I know that is a tough thing to discuss and I respond to emails daily. I know Mr. Simons does as well, and so does Mr. Buno, that it's almost illogical that we're not allowed to bring our students back out that social distancing requirements, but we are running athletic sports. We don't make the rules. We plan on a regular, daily basis. We are prepared. When those regulations and requirements are lifted, or at least loosened up a little bit, we're ready to go. This is an opportunity for our students and as illogical as it may seem to somebody looking in, we want to make sure that we're taking advantage of every opportunity. So with the school board meeting scheduled for February 24th, I was endorsing wrestling to be approved for practicing and having non-contact conditioning types of activities. And we can monitor that, Mr. Leonard can monitor that, and we can revisit it again on February 24th to see if we want to continue along that line or maybe open things up even further at that time.
So Jim, if, if, just a question, if we have the, if this moves forward based on the board's input, will the student athletes have enough practice days in to participate if we go forward on the 24th?
So that's a great question. New York State Public High School Athletic Association rule is 10 practices. So for all of our sports that began this week, they have to have 10 practices before they're able to compete regardless. So these practices would count towards the 10 practices, but that's a great question.
Okay. So I'd welcome input from the board. Again, the recommendation from Mr. McHugh and Mr. Leonard and the coach is to begin with the, let's see, has described as a non-contact conditioning only at this time. Right? So, feedback from board members? Any questions? I guess I would support this. I think it would be a way for the wrestling athletes to start a process of conditioning, which is a very physical activity, obviously. And I think that if the board members support it, we can move the resolution to approve the coaching and to permit wrestling. First, we can do the resolution and then we can move the approval of the coaches to the consent agenda under the, the personnel items, if that's acceptable. But I want to hear from the board members if that plan would be appropriate. I see John thumbs up earlier. Anybody else? It looks like it's a positive result. Anybody have concerns they want to express? I think that based on our experience now and the assurances we have about monitoring and Mr. Leonard and, and the coaches, we will move forward. So I'll need a motion to approve the resolution to move forward with a non-contact, non-contact conditioning. Kathleen, I need a second. Can you see any? John? Close in favor? All right. Approved. Very good. And then we'll move the resolution for the coaching appointments to the personnel section. Genie, can you just note that? Okay. All right. So when we get to the consent agenda, we'll, we'll act on that item. And the next item was the, the testing program? Mr. Simons?
Yes, we've been working over the course of the last couple of weeks to see if it was feasible to operate a testing program, COVID-19 testing program for our winter sport athletes. We have met with our nurses. We have discussed this with the coaches. And we have a model that we think will work effectively to provide an additional layer of assurances to the district, to the players, the coaches, and the parents. The model that we're proposing is a little different than some other districts in our county and also in the suburban council, in part because some of the county districts' medical directors would only approve winter sports if a testing program was in place. Our medical director did not indicate that he would require a testing program. We're doing this on our own initiative. Additionally, some of the other counties have required testing. And in some cases, the districts are doing more larger-scale surveillance testing because they're in Albany County, and Albany County has provided more direct support to be able to do that. Our county hasn't provided that support. So we have a model that's based on consent of the parent and it is also, those consent forms have gone out. And I'm going to turn it over to Molly McGrath, who I hope is here, because Molly has really worked with Mr. Leonard and the nurses and the testing teams, along with Ms. Cannon and Mrs. Wagler, to put this in place. We think it's a very good model because it's flexible, it can, we can respond to our team schedules and we have the nurses to be able to do it. And I'm going to turn it over to Molly.
I'm here, Jeff.
Okay, very good. You're on, Molly.
Okay, thank you. So as a team, we've worked very hard to prepare for the original COVID testing plan if we were to be designated a yellow zone and required to test 20% of our in-person students. Since the governor switched his focus to hospitalization rates, that plan never came to fruition. So we were able to easily adapt our plans to use the COVID tests from Questar to implement a student athletic COVID testing program. So currently, we have eight teams operating with approximately 300 students. There's a chart attached that shows you the approximate number of students on each team. And we have four nurses and 25 support staff who are willing to participate in the COVID athletic testing program. So we've adjusted the plans for the nurse to work with the head coach and coordinate weekly testing of our athletes around their practice schedule. So a nurse would be assigned to the team and work with the coach to pull students who have consented during their practice time to complete the rapid 15-minute test. As Jeff mentioned, all student athletes received a consent form yesterday afternoon explaining the testing program. And we've asked that consent be returned back by tomorrow or Friday at the latest. Once we have the number of students who have consented, we plan to start tech, to start COVID testing next week over February break. So the tentative schedule would be on Wednesday, February 17th. We would test a percentage of the boys and girls indoor track team that returned consent. Thursday, February 18th, we would test our cheerleading team. And Friday, February 19th, we would test the boys and girls basketball teams. So we're eager to see how many families return consent and we could start as early as next week if we have a good response rate.
One of the reasons we set it up this way was because it's very uncertain what the game schedule was going to be. So we really didn't want to say we have a designated day and a time that brings everybody together because the game schedules are very fluid. Different districts were being given permission to participate at different times. We're just starting to put together games for later this week. And matching up the nurses with, and the testing with the coaches gives us the flexibility to work around the coaches' practice times.
Okay.
So we want to, we want to just encourage as many families as possible to give us the consent to do it because it's just another layer of support to make sure that the students, not only those on the team, but those students within our schools are healthy and safe. The 15-minute time period allows us to isolate a student in the event that they are positive during a practice, contact the family and those, those students, of course, would be subject to the same quarantine requirements that everyone is, but we think this is a feasible way to go about it. It's once a week and we're hoping that as many students as possible, families will
Questions for Molly or Jeff regarding the testing piece? I had a question. So the plan is to do a percentage of the athletes on the team on any given day? Like, not everybody?
No, it won't be everybody. It would only be the students that, whose family has consented.
Okay.
Once a week.
Okay.
But for example, there's, say, 75 students on girls' track. We wouldn't be able to test, if 50 returned consent, we would probably take a portion of that 50 since practice to our window.
Yep, yep. The other thing is, are the consents a condition of participation?
No.
No? Okay. So we want to encourage participation in the consent testing program.
We were advised we could do it either way. Initially, we were advised that consent was required involuntary, but then.
Okay.
After some other districts had checked, we could make it a condition to play, but we chose not to do that.
Okay. Very good. And are some schools going to make it a requirement to compete with them? Is that our understanding?
Those schools that, whose medical directors or counties required it as a condition to approve the sport, it's mandatory for all of their student athletes.
Okay.
There's a range of different things going on.
Yeah.
You know, for example, I believe Rensselaer City School District and SCOTAC's medical director would only approve their sports.
Right.
If, if there was a testing program. So in that case, all of the athletes have to be tested. Shenandoah, some of the larger districts that we compete with, Gilderlin, Bethlehem Colony, had already initiated surveillance testing.
Okay.
So their athletes are already included within the testing program that they have, as I understand it. And I don't believe, but I'm not certain, that they're doing a separate student-athlete program.
I see.
They're just pulling their athletes into those programs.
Okay. Very good. Okay. Anybody else? Questions? All right.
Our tests are being delivered on Friday.
Kathleen?
Yeah. Mr. Simons, could you just, I know you've sent something to us, but could you just state for the public, for the schools that have started their testing program, what percentage of those tests are coming back positive?
I had a meeting. That's a great question. I had a meeting with the suburban council superintendents last Friday and some of those districts reported their results of their surveillance testing. And those districts are as large as us or larger. It was zero in most cases and in one district, it was one or two students. So, and that was a sample of anywhere between 300 and 400 students being tested.
Wow.
They were getting zeros.
Excellent. Thanks for sharing that. Good question, Kathleen. Anyone else? All right. Well, thank you for putting the plan together and keep us posted on how things are progressing.
Thank you, Molly.
Moving on in the, the agenda, we are now moving to committee reports. We'll start with Marissa.
Thank you, Mr. Bino. The Committee on Appendix D met on Tuesday, February 2nd. We continued our.
Can you guys hear?
We continued our.
There you go.
Discussions on potentially an hourly rate to fix the cost matrix with a tiered system. So what we did during this committee meeting was we had drafted two tiered systems as potential cost structures. Mrs. Taylor, Mr. McHugh, and myself prepared and shared an Appendix D tiered system on a scale of one to four, one being the highest level tier, four being the lowest. We looked at each club and removed the human element and we really looked at the design of that club, the intent of the club, and a lot of the historical information. Mr. Romanowski and Ms. Hosier designed a compensation tier with tier one equaling 1,000, tier two equaling 2,000, all the way up to tier five at 5,000. So they had looked at it a little bit differently and tiered the clubs based on compensation. So the committee agreed to look at both draft tier systems and we looked at the top tier first to see what commonalities could we find. So we had discussed student council in regards to how involved those groups are at various levels, Columbia High School, Goff Middle School, and at our elementary level. We looked at our science Olympiad teams at Columbia High School and Goff Middle School. And we feel that that club in particular would be at that top tier. We had asked for a little bit more information on the Goff Science Olympiad team prior to our next meeting to gather more information to see if both teams would be placed at that same top level. We also discussed Yerba Club. That is another club that's very time-consuming. A lot of preparation goes into it each year. And we discussed, again, the hourly component. Some of our committee members feel like it would be hit or miss. Some of our committee members feel like it would be hit or miss in terms of efficiency. Other individuals feel like there's just too much unknown for an hourly rate. There's a suggestion that we tier each club with a set stipend. So, we are open to that idea. There's also some concerns about potentially monitoring the hourly component week to week. The music clubs, we believe, are a component to the Appendix D system that we have to have a lot of further conversation with. We had thought potentially bringing in someone from the music department in a future meeting to talk to us about the intricacies of the music department. The tiered design system that was tied to compensation, it looks to be about $42,000 of an increase. That is not something that we're looking to do right now. We're looking to keep that compensation level to what's budgeted for. So, at the end of the meeting, I had recommended we take another look at that tiered compensation spreadsheet. It did look very similar to what the stipends are now. And I think we have to look at those end-of-year reports to determine what the clubs are doing present day to see where we can make changes to that compensation level. So, the committee did agree to look at the end-of-year reports dating back to the 1718 school year. At this time, the entire committee has those reports in electronic format. And we met yesterday and we started to analyze those reports and start making some sense of the data. So, we are set to meet again the week following February recess. And I would just like to welcome Mrs. Taylor and Mr. McHugh, if you have anything to add.
Joanne?
I just want to say that I think Marissa summed everything up. The more you dig, the more questions we have. There is no easy fix to this, to look at it and say that this club only does this. When you dig deeper, we have to look at the clubs that are doing things off-campus, volunteering, raising money for other groups. There's just so many different little nuances that we need to look at. It is going to be a big work in process, but we are working through it. I think we've made a lot of progress at yesterday's meeting. And we're looking back at historical data, which I think will help us to look past the pandemic years and see what we were doing pre-pandemic.
Thank you Joanne.
I'm encouraged. I think we've made good progress there.
Excellent. Thanks, thanks Joanne. Thanks Marissa. Any questions, board members, for, for Marissa on her report? No? Good. All right. Thank you, Marissa. We'll move to Linda. Health insurance?
We had a health insurance committee meeting. Can you hear me?
Can't hear, they can't. There you go.
Okay. We had a health insurance committee meeting on Monday, February 1st. All of the negotiating units are invited as representation. And we thought it was a, a suggestion was made to us to review the Blue Shield PPO plan side-by-side with the upcoming KASIC PPO plan, since there are several employment groups that will be moving to that on July 1st. So, I invited Mr. Knopf, Chris Knopf, from Ampture Associates. And he, he did a side-by-side comparison for us with that. He also talked about the drug plans and the reserves that we have on file with KASIC and how that can help us to balance out our premium increases for next year. And we also talked about the differences between the basic formulary prescription plan, which most employees have now, and the ASO custom formulary plan, which is the administrative services-only custom formulary plan. And basically, the basic plan has, was lacking in controls. And so, that's why we're looking to move towards this ASO custom formulary plan. And we just discussed our status in KASIC. And we will have another meeting on Monday, April 26th.
Thank you Linda. Any questions for Linda? No? Very good. Thank you Linda. Jim?
Yes. The Committee for Curriculum Study met Wednesday, February 3rd. We met through Google Meet. Thirty-nine members were in attendance. At that meeting, our English Language Arts Program Review was presented to our Committee for Curriculum Study. It was endorsed by the committee and it will be presented to the Board of Education on March 24th. Our Science Program Review was presented to CCS and endorsed. That also will come to the Board and be presented to you on March 24th. Both program reviews were very impressive. There's quite a bit that has been accomplished. And there's a solid focus on where we need to go moving forward. In addition, Howard L. Goff Middle School, there was a presentation from their administrative team on a review of their encore classes. They discussed what the New York State Education Department requirements are at the middle school level. They talked about some possible options of some minor changes. Nothing that would have an additional cost associated to it. But we looked specifically at CTA, CTE, Career and Technical Education. And we looked at integrating some digital literacy into the sixth-grade technology curriculum. We want to make sure that we don't lose all of the tremendous work that our CTE department at the middle school has done over the last three summers. We wanted that coding element and the robotics element to remain within that technology course. So, that'll be presented to the Board on March 10th. Mrs. Barker's listening in, and that's news to her that she's presenting March 10th.
You're ready.
And then, the summer application for curriculum writing was sent out to all of our EGTA members. It's due back March 26, 2021. And we talked about the U Albany Literacy Department with the East Greenberg Central School District, that collaborative effort. That first professional development session was run today from 9:00 a.m. until 12:00 noon. Thirty-two of our teachers participated. And what was really impressive was all five of our elementary principals joined that professional development. I thought that sent out a tremendous positive statement. Again, that was presented by Dr. Donna Scanlon from the University at Albany and Peggy Connors. The focus for today was developing the knowledge and expertise to address literacy learning, you know, organizing instruction to respond to students' needs. And the focus is on early literacy within the primary grades. In addition, Kate Banks shared the work that was completed by our school library specialist. She shared that link out to a website link that they created regarding school justice reform and global awareness. So, that's a pretty impressive site. If folks get a chance to take a look at that. Thank you.
Thank you Jim. Any questions for Jim? Thank you for the ongoing work of the committee. Just to clarify, so the middle school presentation on the March 10th, science on March 24th, and then ELA?
March 24th.
As well, March 24th. Very good. We'll make sure we plan those out accordingly. Mr. Simons?
Just briefly, in the interest of time, we did a school climate survey in the fall, late fall. We have a subcommittee of the Safety Committee that is currently looking at the survey results. We did have a very good response rate. Overall, there are general issues that we're looking at in terms of how people perceive our schools. Do they feel welcome? Do they feel safe? Do they feel accepted? Areas looking at in terms of how students treat each other, how staff treats students, how everyone feels about the climate. And overall, the indicators were very positive, but we're digging a little bit deeper into areas for recommendations for potential growth. Expect that we will take this up at the Safety Committee meeting and prepare a formal presentation for the Board and the community on the results of the survey and then distribute those to the parents.
Very good.
And staff.
So, we're anticipating maybe late March, early April for?
Probably early April.
Early April, okay. Making a note. Any questions for Mr. Simons? No? Okay. We will move now to the approval of minutes for January 27th. All board members were present. Any comments or revisions to the minutes of January 27th? Seeing none, need a motion to approve those? Frank, second. Michelle, all those in favor? Approved. Special meeting on February 2nd. Any questions, comments, revisions? No? Need a motion to approve those? Jennifer, second. Deanna, all those in favor? The minutes are approved. Moving to regular business, approval of programs for resident children with disabilities. Question or comment? Motion to approve? Michelle, I saw your hand. Second. Joanne, all those in favor? Approved. Moving into some more detailed resolutions regarding the East Greenbush Operations and Technical Supervisor Association, approval of contract settlement. Any comments? Jeff, you want to?
Just for public's information, this is a small bargaining unit representing our employees who serve as supervisors and directors. For example, our Director of Facilities, our Food Service Lunch Manager, our Transportation Director, and our Senior Accountant Treasurer in the Business Office. So...
Very small, okay. Any questions or comments on the resolution? Seeing none, need a motion to approve that? John, second. Mark, all those in favor? I think you had your hand up, Mark. I can't tell. I saw a finger go up, so. It was approved. Approved. Very good. Confidential Employees Memorandum of Understanding. Any questions, Jeff? Anything?
No, this is an agreement with our confidential secretaries for three years that outlines their compensation and health benefits and some other changes we previously recommended to the Board.
Very good.
Four years, excuse me. Linda's giving me the four.
Four years?
Four-year agreement.
Four-year agreement, very good. Any questions or comments on that agreement? No? Need a motion to approve that? Frank, second. Kathleen, all those in favor? Approved. Good. So, we do have the two resolutions regarding the emergency project at the Transportation Center. The first one is the Emergency Project Resolution for the State Environmental Quality Review Act. SECR, am I saying that right?
Yes.
SECRA, SECR? Any questions or things you want to notify us about that? Linda, anything related to that?
Yes. So, this, both of these resolutions have to do with our emergency project at the Transportation Center. As you know, the, the tanks failed inspections recently and need to be replaced. So, the first resolution has to do with the state environmental, I'm sorry, I just went to the wrong one, the State Environmental Quality Review Act. And our March associates, our architect, determined this to be a type-two action, which is the effect on the environment. And it did not raise to a higher level because we are not, we are not building construction. So, we will have some soil remediation associated with this.
Okay.
That's the first resolution. The next resolution has to do with an ordinary contingent expense resolution. And basically, our architects have put together a budget for the removal and replacement of these tanks. They estimate the cost of this project to be $629,044. And we'll need Board approval in order to move forward with that.
Are there any questions on either of the resolutions regarding the emergency project? I'd like to do that as a, two items by consent, if that's permitted?
Two separate items.
They have to be two separate items, two separate votes, okay. The first one is on the SECRA?
SECRA.
SECRA? Need a motion to approve that? Kathleen, or Kathleen, I'm sorry, Michelle and Joanne, all those in favor? Sorry. They're getting smaller and smaller on that screen. All those approved? Yes? No one opposed? Good. Getting a little tired here, so bear with me. The next one is the Emergency Project Resolution that Linda just indicated. Any questions or comments? I need a motion to approve that? Jennifer, second. Kathleen, all those in favor? Any opposed? None? Approved. Very good. Reports and presentations of the superintendent schools?
Nothing further.
Nothing further? I have no table motions. All business, board members, anything that we may have missed or from last meeting? No? Good. All right, moving to the consent agenda. We have items A through G. Any comments or questions regarding those items? Anything Jeff, you want to add? And again, this would include, Jeannie, just to note, this would include the coaches for the wrestling appointments that were on the, earlier in the agenda, okay?
Mike, I'd just like to offer my congratulations to Mrs. Anderson Green, Mr. Hewnich and Mrs. Kerwin on their impending retirement. A lot of years, when you total up the number of years they've been with the district, and I wish them well in their retirement. Best wishes for happy retirement.
Yep. On the behalf of the Board, we extend our congratulations. Thanks, Joanne, for mentioning that. Any other questions on the consent agenda items? Hearing none, I need a motion to approve by consent, items A through G. Kathleen, second. Joanne, all those in favor? Approved. Okay, very good. Moving on, any new business, board members? No? All right. We'll move to the second public forum. Linda, do we have any?
No public comments.
No public comments, okay. Second Board Forum, I'll start here in the building. Frank, anything? We're good? Let's see, Kathleen? Nothing? Jennifer?
I just wanted to say thank you to everyone working in the district for keeping things moving forward, all the hard work and commitment, everything that is happening to support our, our students and our families and our parents in the community. And again, I know a lot of hours, a lot of commitment is happening right now. And it's very much appreciated and recognized. So, looking forward to, and I love John's analogy there of, you know, crawl, walk and run. And hopefully, we'll be walking and hopefully, running come fall or at least maybe later on this year. So, thanks again to everybody for their hard commitment and tremendous work.
Thank you Jennifer, very, very nicely said. John? You good? Michelle? Good. Mark? No comments? Joanne? Good? And Deanna? I think the, just final comments some I have is that, you know, we, like Jennifer said, the, the district has been through a long process through this school year in the hybrid model. And our parents and families and kids have been extremely patient, work with us through all the ups and downs. And we're getting to a point where things are improving. We see... I don't know if that, I don't think that was me, but it was a technical. Did you guys hear that? Sorry, apologize for whatever that was. A little feedback issue there. As I said, I think everyone's been patient. Things are, look like they're improving for us in terms of the COVID positivity. Things are opening up. We can see from the Governor's messages, some of the arts, some of the sports. And now, it's time for us to do our part to help our community and try to do the best we can to get our kids back to school. Watching everything, being safe, being safe with our staff, and knowing that the best place for our kids is, is in our schools. And we'll get there. Please bear with us. We know how important it is to our families and we're working hard. The district administrators, the principals, everyone, the teachers, everyone behind the scenes is working hard to keep everyone safe and to make sure that we can come back in a, in the right way, in a safe way. And I will always support as much as we can to get our kids back to school. So, that being said, we do have need for an executive session for the purpose of contract grievance hearing process. And what we'll do is, well, Peter will send out a separate email for the executive session. And do we know who else has to get that, Mr. Simons?
Peter knows that.
Peter has the list of folks? All right. So, to those members of the committee and administration that are here, thank you very much for, for participation. I need a motion to go into executive session. Jennifer, second. Mark, all those in favor? Approved. So, thank you very much. Have a great evening.